Good evening. I apologize for being a little bit late. The board had a workshop on standardized testing and it was very informative and actually kept us longer than we anticipated. So, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we stand for Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I just want to make one comment although it's not comments or not on or board chair comments are not on the agenda anymore. I have not heard about any requests from board members on committee assignments. Have you heard anything, Patrick? Nobody? So, again, I remind you, we're looking at those assignments. The committees, Lou has a new committee or an ad hoc committee on school scheduling. So, we're looking for volunteers, board volunteers for that ad hoc committee and also if you want to move your assignment from one regular committee to another, okay? So, please get in touch with Patrick or let me know and I'll get it to Patrick.
A couple have let me know about the ad hoc, but...
Okay. Item 4.0, we have minutes for the January 28 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve second by Bill? Any discussion, any corrections, mischaracterizations? Although Vida doesn't do any mischaracterizations. If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Minutes are... Item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. I don't have anything, Patrick? No? Okay. Item 6.0, public session. This is our first public session or public comment and it is an opportunity for you to address the board about items that are on the agenda. Does anyone want to address the board on an agenda item? If not, thank you. Item 7.0, staff reports.
Yeah, we're happy to have Leslie Trundy here from Morse High School as well as Bowden Gould and I think you came to Phippsburg, was it last year or the year before? Okay, yeah, and talked about your leadership role with Fuel Up to Play and so this year we're happy to have you come back and I'll have either one of you come up to the podium and we look forward to it.
Involved with Fuel Up to Play 60 for about five years now and last summer, myself, Abby Carpenter and Kennedy St Pierre couldn't make it today, went to a Student Ambassador Summit in Atlanta, Georgia. And this summit was around 150 students from all over the nation, came with about 75 or 80 program advisors throughout the nation and talked about leadership and responsibilities within your school to make your school a healthier and more active like place or slash community. So, I'm just here to talk about like what Fuel Up to Play 60 means to me and like what role it has in our school. So, Fuel Up to Play 60 is an in-school wellness program. It promotes physical activity and healthy eating within the schools and it gets diverse students in schools active and healthy. And what we try to do in our school is we set up breakfasts and like different community opportunities like the Bath YMCA night, we do that and it has people of all ages come and get active and eat healthy and promote healthy eating so they can go on in their own time and eat healthy and do their own physical activity. So, Morse has accomplished so far this year a Fuel Up breakfast. So, in the beginning of the year, we invited companies from around Bath to make breakfasts for students in our school and everyone was offered a breakfast. So, we had like a bunch of tables set up in like a U and they went around and picked what they want and they get to vote on what their favorite breakfast was. And so, at the end, everyone just realized like how like healthy a breakfast could be and what they could eat instead of eating like junk food in the morning. So, that was a really good way to promote healthy eating. And this year, it was really fun. We got to help set up a UMaine hockey game reception for Fuel Up to Play 60 students. Abby Carpenter and Kennedy went to that. I couldn't go to that, but we helped set it up and it was fun to like see the like behind the scenes type thing and it was just interesting to see like how many students would come to this and see what like work and effort they put in to receive like this accomplishment and the goals that they've set and achieved. So, it was really cool. And last year, we presented up the University of Southern Maine for Fuel Up to Play 60 students and we presented what we've done in the program last year and that was a really good achievement for us because we got to show what we've done throughout the school year last year. So, that's what we've done so far this year. We're planning on doing another YMCA night later in March, which should be fun and interesting. Do you have anything to input?
Yeah, I'll just add that my role this year was really by happenstance. Because Kennedy St Pierre was coming from the middle school and had been selected as a state representative for the state of Maine, they needed a faculty, an adult basically to attend the summit with her. So, others couldn't go, so they said, "Hey, would you like to do this?" And it was just a really incredible experience. I'm very much just a partner in this kind of helping. Charlie Bingham is the primary person within Morse High School, but just my fresh perspective on the program is it really is a great opportunity for young people, including elementary age people. We don't currently have any elementary age students involved with a Fuel Up to Play 60 program, but that was one of the things I really witnessed and what was great was to witness Bowden's role in supporting kids because his role as a national, he was part of the national Fuel Up program, is that he was shepherding and mentoring these young people from all over the country. He had a small group and was sort of like a Pied Piper leading them along and some of these students have been involved with elementary programs right up through. It just has, it has a great capacity to build leadership, to really build awareness about the importance of eating healthy and getting regular exercise. And it's really an outstanding national program and I'm excited to do what I can to support it here within the RSU and especially at Morse High School. So, unless there's any question, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any board questions? How many kids participate in the program? I'll let either of you answer.
So, in our school, we have about five in our, on our team. So, they, we like set up events and stuff like that, but throughout the nation, there's, I don't know, like at the summit, there's usually around 200 student ambassadors that go and attend, but they're split up so they're not like with their teams, like from their school. So, there's a lot. I don't know the current number of how many, because there's all the schools from the nation like participating Fuel Up to Play 60, but they might not all go to the summit. So, I don't know the current numbers of like...
Well, for example, you described a breakfast. You described a U-shaped table, so I can't call it a round table, but how many students from...
So, I would say that the leadership team at Morse is kind of small and mighty, but what they're bringing, the program they're delivering, so the Y night, I would say that's about 200 students. So, probably a third of the student body is attending the events that the Fuel Up team is promoting and they're open to the entire student body. So, it's just exciting to see what a little bit of faculty mentorship and student enthusiasm can do to kind of bring to life these ideals of wellness and physical activity.
I know Tim's not here, right? No, Tim's not here, but you know, Tim has been working really hard to improve our lunch program and our breakfast offerings in the schools and he's making some great headway there. Are you guys, do you communicate with Tim, Tim with you on...
Yeah, I'm going to pass the mic to Charlie because they definitely have done some great collaboration, so we'll let Charlie weigh in.
Sure.
Thanks. So, with the program, the breakfast program this year, I think we probably had between 250 and 300 kids having breakfast on a late start Wednesday. It happened to be on a Halloween this year, so we did it as a breakfast challenge and we had local Maze Cafe, the pizza place down at the cabin donated a large pizza. There were six different groups that made their best breakfast treat and it was free. And kids went through, we had quiches, we had muffins, croissants and Tim's group made their best breakfast as well. And so, the kids voted on it and then we gave out awards of participation to each of the community groups and then Maze Cafe happened to win, so they got a big award and recognition for that. And our goal is to have it every year and hopefully get bigger and bigger because, and Mr. Ronnie can speak to it because he was there too, administration and teachers came down and that was one of the biggest things for us is teachers need to eat too. And I think because of the schedules they have and taking care of their own kids and their own families, it was great to see everyone come together as a school and not just individuals. And I think that was really important. It was a great, that was the most kids I've seen there in a long time. So, that was great for us and I think it was great to see the communities came and served the kids and they were like, "Wow, this is awesome." So, I think it was great for the communities to see us and for us to see the communities' outreach and care about kids and the nutrition and the breakfast that they need. Because as you guys all know, we have so many kids that go to school hungry. Sorry, I talked a lot there.
No, it's good. Any other, any other questions?
Bowden, just a question for you. I was impressed two years ago when you came to us, you had an opportunity to meet professional athletes, college Division One athletes. How did you get chosen or how did you get to this, like is it national ambassador leader of the program? And just curious how you got there and I assume it's been a really good leadership experience for you.
Yeah, so I started when I was in sixth grade. It took me two years to reach a state ambassador like status slash level where like my first time, which was going to Minneapolis. So, it took me two years to reach that by just like working my butt off trying to like report on the website and get as much like info as I could from our school to the Fuel Up to Play 60 national team. And when I went to Minneapolis, I just tried to like stand out and like, because that's what they told us. They told us, I was talking to one of the other youth council members that graduated last year and she said, "Really stand out and show that you want to be there and show that you want to like promote and you know what the Fuel Up to Play 60 program is for and not just going to these big places and like flying out and stuff like that." So, I just kind of like proved to them like that I was there to like represent the Fuel Up to Play 60 program and not just like the fun for myself. And I think that's what got me to where I am now and it's been, it's been a journey, but it's fun, yeah.
I just want to add that it was a really great pleasure. They had a like an Academy Award-winning reception for the program advisors and again, I'll remind you that I was really not a program advisor last year and I'm just really a support program advisor. So, it's funny to be at this reception, but they rolled the red carpet out and it was really cool that Bowden was selected of all the students to introduce our keynote speaker, who I'm going to just need some help, who was it? He was the, was it the doctor? He just did a great job and he did a great job representing RSU One and it's been wonderful to watch his growth in the program and that's what it offers to kids. And the one thing I'd love to see is to have it start younger in the RSU to help spread that message and that leadership at a younger age.
Okay, no, thank you. Yeah, it would be nice to allow the program, you know, to build those habits in younger kids so that, you know, by the time they reach high school, they're well, they're well programmed, you know, into healthy eating. So, it's a good direction to take, I think.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item 8.0, committee reports, Patrick?
Yeah, just an update on the building project. We did hire a clerk of the works that will start in March that will oversee the project, the day-to-day operations, and that's Kyler Feagles. And so, we went through an interviewing process with our architect and with some staff. The bids for the general contractor come in this Thursday, we'll open it too and I will let the board know who the apparent low bidder is, pre-qualified low bidder. And the last thing that we've put out to the, you know, we put out to our committees and we will get out to the, you know, the public soon, is that we do have three bidders for this project and all three bidders have expressed concern about the timeline of this project being too tight. And it's not because we're behind on site work, it's because of the economy and that the workers are just not there right now, especially in the areas of pouring cement, drywall, you know, those types of things. And so, they, we were concerned that we would have bidders back out or that the bids would come in at an unreasonable level. And so, we now have put into the bid process that instead of fall of 2020, meaning September of 2020, opening the building, that it looks more like it would be, you know, December is when now the cutoff is. So, the district, you know, has a lot of work to do in this whole project and one of those things we have to consider is would we want to move in over a holiday break? You know, would we want to move in over a February break or do we, by that time, is it, we just want to go in in 2021? But I think the level of excitement will hopefully be there. We can get a punch list done and we could possibly move in in the middle of a year. But we have the contract bids Thursday and then we have a building committee meeting the following Thursday and that's when the, you know, the community committee that we have will, you know, weigh in on this topic. But it's still going forward. It doesn't affect our finances as far as bonding that we're going to do, anything like that. So, I don't know if the board has any questions on the schedule.
Any questions for Patrick? We're required by law to take the low bid. It's as a public contract and do you anticipate that there might be, I know, I know you've had conversations with the three contractors. Do you anticipate that one of those bidders might come in at September of 2020 or not?
I think they'll all come in because our architect made a change in the bid document as far as the, you know, the date. You know, we have had one of those bidders that have communicated to us that, hey, if we start in March and we're able to get all of those subcontractors to come in right on time, then, you know, there still is a chance that it could be done in September, but to be safe and to do a good quality job, it's, they felt it was beneficial to have until December.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Well, it's back to you.
No, Katie.
Katie has talked with you guys for an hour before this, but she has a couple more things to talk about.
I can't believe you have any more. This is going to be very brief. So, just three quick business items. The graduation policy that Eric and I thought we would have to you by this meeting, we didn't end up getting to it at our last department chair meeting, so you'll hopefully have that for either the following meeting or the one after. We just, we had a lot we had to get through, so my apologies. The calendar for next year, for the 1920 school year is nearly finished and so I just wanted to let you know that that will also be in your packet for next time because the board votes on that. And finally, Lou and I will have more information to share on a board advisory committee proposal that we'll be putting forth in front of all of you for a school start time committee that will involve some board members, teachers, principals, community members and students. And so, we're in the midst of each kind of talking to people who might be interested in joining and I'm finalizing that write-up and I'll have it to you soon, okay? And that came as a community request, just to remind the board that we should look into that research project. The final really quick update is just some good news on our evaluation system. So, you had a very long presentation last year about the teacher components and then I promised I'd follow up when the leadership components, so how are our principals evaluated when that part was developed? And so, our evaluation steering committee did finalize and vote on the leadership components of the process and so, just like we use the Kim Marshall, he's, you know, one of the renowned instructional leaders that we're using the rubric for, for our teaching evaluation system, we'll be using a version of his rubric for our principals, so it's completely aligned. Principals will have to submit two goals, one personal professional goal for their own growth and one school-focused goal for an instructional area of improvement. They will have two evaluation meetings with, actually, it's more like three, with Patrick and I during the year, one to set those goals in the beginning and then one mid-year and one at the end because there'll be two surveys that staff fill out on each building administrator to get feedback that they then can take action on. And the surveys, we've already done one of them, met with all the principals and they're working on, you know, patting themselves on the back and making some improvements based on what they found out. So, I think in general, we're really happy with the system. And finally, the last big project that the steering committee just completed is making sure that all of the evaluations for the more non-instructional staff, so people who don't have teaching or being a principal as their title essentially, so we have guidance counselors and other folks who also needed an updated version of their evaluation and those are completed and will be reviewed by the principals actually tomorrow. So, by the end, I would say in the next couple of months, our whole system will be revamped and in place, which is really exciting news. Any questions about that?
Any questions for Katie on any of those several items? When you bring the document on the start time...
Yes.
...to the board, when, I presume it's going to be an agreed-to document, we're not going to see something from Lou and something from you that...
No, it's, it's one official proposal that we already drafted together and I just have to finish the write-up. So, it's on behalf of both of us because we'll be chairing the committee together.
Okay. And you're going to set out some pretty clear objectives?
Yes, there's actually a board policy that outlines what we're required to...
To do.
...to do and there's a certain scope of work you have to set and a timeline for that work and what decisions we are and are not allowed to make. In the end, we essentially provide research, not necessarily, we don't make any sort of decision. It's really is a research project, so to speak.
Okay, great.
Yeah, well, we can point to, you know, what research shows, what, you know, if it's pointing in a direction one way or another, what the options would be and then it's, then the board needs to say, "Okay, we, thank you, we're done" or "Yes, let's look further" or "Now, we need to make a decision" or whatever it is. But yeah, we're just, it's about collecting information.
Right. Yeah, thank you for asking, that's a good clarification.
Good, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Katie. Okay, 9.0, Hayden, Sidney is topped behind there. Any reports you'd like to do?
So, the RSU One schools just had their winter slash February break, which was welcomed by Morse, which had its first semester recognition assembly followed by what we call winter carnival. And the two options this year were either to do a National Guard blow-up obstacle course or the other option was to watch a staff versus unified basketball game down in the pit.
You haven't decided what to do though? Those were the two options.
Yeah. Those were the two options.
Okay, Sidney.
I think Hayden summed that up pretty well. We're just moving along into our second semester, trying to keep this year's hopes a little higher and to stay in school and just moving along. I do believe SATs are going to be coming up because all the prep classes have started and other than that, I think we're just moving along quite nicely in our second semester.
Very good.
Thanks. Any questions of Hayden or Sidney? Nope. Okay, thank you guys. 10.0, superintendent's report, Patrick?
Just some items, some academic items and some athletic items and then talk about state subsidy. So, the 100th day of school is a big deal at the elementary level. You probably forget about it at the high school level, but it was neat to be around the elementary schools to see a lot of fun and educational activities. National Honor Society at Morse is doing a great job going down to Fisher Mitchell on a consistent basis and being mentors for a lot of students there. At your table here tonight, there's a thank you letter from Kim Bedard, who is the president of Maine School Boards Association and they had a group, I think they picked nine districts across the state to come and visit to get a better understanding of what's going on across the state and what issues school boards are having. So, they visited three or four of our schools and really impressed. I think she outlined in that letter, they went into a science classroom, Beth Paul's at Woolwich and were very impressed with life skills, vocational programs, met with more students and also met with board members. So, it was a, it was a good day. So, please, you know, take that letter with you. Some athletic pieces, both Woolwich basketball teams had very successful seasons, a very exciting end to their seasons for both boys and girls. Charlie Bingham, who was here tonight, took Special Olympians up to Sugarloaf and had a great time and you've heard about our unified basketball program that has really gone well this year as well. Both boys and girls swim teams finished second at the KBAC championship and placed well at the state championship. Boys were fifth and the girls were fourth. Olivia Harper continues to shatter records. She set the pool and state record for the 100 backstroke at the KBAC championship here at the Y. Our cheer team had a strong winter, finishing third at the regional championship and ninth at the state championship. Boys basketball team returned to the playoffs this year, earning a preliminary game against Mount Ararat. Tom Warren scored 1,000 points of his career this year, becoming the sixth Morse basketball player and a fourth boy to do so. And the wrestling team had a strong season. They sent five wrestlers to the state championship. Ason Myers won the KBAC and regional championship and finished third at the state championship, earning a spot at the New England's this weekend. And then lastly, under good news, you know, we did find out that we have an increase in state subsidy of 633,000. That's a little higher than what I originally sent you. So, you know, as we go through the budget process, we will explain that to you the best we can of why we believe it went up, but you received an email from MSBA, I think, MSMA, talking about it, but really the, a couple of things to highlight is the minimum special ed adjustment was increased from 40% to 45%. The mil rate was decreased down from eight point, I mean, 8.28 mils down from 8.48 in FY 2019, which makes a difference. And just overall, to remember that an increase or decrease in student enrollment really impacts us and we are not gaining students at this point, so that didn't help us a whole lot. We are in one community. But disadvantaged student population can help you as well as special education costs and other key factors that have a major impact on the state funding formula. So, it's good news for us. As you know, we have the, our responsibility of the financial burden of the new school that we'll go over next week with you as well, but this is good news for us. We were hoping to get a little bit more than last year and this is a very positive.
Thanks, Patrick. Any, any questions of Patrick? This subsidy number is a plenary number, obviously, so it can fluctuate considerably. And, and our school census in Woolwich is increasing because that's the growth community, so...
So typically... So typically, that community that grows their percentage... So typically, that community that grows, their percentage increase of the budget grows a little bit, you know, a little bit as well.
That's kind of why I put it out there as a shot over the, just a preliminary mention of the fact. Go ahead.
And that's a really good point, Steve, because I think there was an article in the, there was CASA paper covering that issue with the Select Board and they were concerned that there was a disproportionate increase for the town of Woolwich. I think it was discussed that it was a higher student count, but I don't think that made it to the newspaper article, so I think it's really important to always look at, it's a per pupil cost.
Which is a big driver, I mean, you know, and we're not, I think, I think the preliminary numbers I saw was CASA might increase, or Woolwich might increase by eight students or something. It wasn't a lot, but it still drives that increase. Okay. Thanks, Patrick. Deborah, Financial Report.
We all want to move to Woolwich. I think it was eight students last year, too.
Yeah.
Okay, so tonight we're looking at January Financial Report and in our seventh month, we have spent $15.3 million out of our $30 million budget. We've encumbered, we're encumbering $11.17 million, which basically, once again, that's the salary and benefits that we expect to spend throughout the remainder of the year. In school administration, you see that it shows a negative amount remaining and that's really because of an overstated amount in the encumbered amount, so next year, I mean, next month you'll see that adjusted. I've looked at that and have adjusted that a little bit. So we should be within budget, within school administration by the end of the year. So the revenue side, we've brought in 58% of our revenue and everything is coming in as we expected, a little bit higher, once again, on the interest and on the student activity, but we'll be within that budgeted amount. At this point in time, everything looks good, everything is as expected and there aren't any great expenses that we aren't planning for or haven't projected. There's three items that I do look at when I look at these monthly reports, I run three separate reports behind the scenes and that's salary and benefits and substitutes. That substitute line is one area that we most likely will go over in this year and that's, we've had quite a few maternity leaves this year, so, but we'll have enough within our salary and benefits to cover that difference. So Finance Department, right at this point, is looking pretty positive, so.
Thanks, Deb.
Lois High School Project, I'll move on to that. We've spent nine and a half million dollars so far, so, and we've brought in 17 million in the ban, so as far as our financing for the final bond at the end of May, we should be fine as far as the way this cash flow's going.
Thanks, Deb. Any questions of Deb? Yep, Jen.
Where does our fundraising report come in, in terms of the amount of fundraising that's come in for the building?
That will be Patrick and Leslie.
Like where we're at right now.
Yeah. If that's here or not, someplace else, it's fine.
No, I mean, we try to do it like every other month, so I think last month we reported out and it was in, I think, might have been in your backup, or we may have brought it to the meeting, so you may have, we may have missed you. No, it's fine, is it's, we've exceeded our target of 700,000 and we are, you know, still have a couple asks out there and then now we're shifting to the bricks and to the theater seats and we're trying to get that out there the best we can. We are also trying to figure out if, as a district, we can handle, you know, coming up with a system through Dean's help of where people can just do an online donation to make it a little easier instead of going through the Ed Foundation, still would funnel through there, so we need to keep getting that word out there. So it's, I guess I would say smaller give is what we're, what we're asking for, but we have exceeded and we're hoping to get closer to a million if we can.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. And Deb, before you leave, and I'm not sure this is your question or Patrick's, I mean, I have read that other districts, neighboring districts are having difficulty finding long-term subs, you know, they, those other districts also point to a lot of folks out on maternity leave. Are we able to find subs?
Overall, you know, it depends on a given day. I mean, overall, yes, we're within a pretty good percentage of covering things. There are floating subs sometimes, extra coverage and that type of thing, but, you know, Anne Marie is posting on the Facebook page all the time asking for substitutes and I think we have a pretty good process of when they come in and they meet with Katie and she interviews them and we just bring in as many as we can, but it's just the nature of that type of a position. I mean, we did go up in the sub rate this year from last and we had gone up the year before that, so we're $85 a day, so I'm not sure if, you know, even if you went up a little bit, if it would bring in more people, but it's something that we constantly work on trying to bring them in and-
Would it, would we ever get up to the need of that, to ever employ a floating substitute person? I mean, would there ever be a part, would it ever make sense to have somebody on staff that could be accessed first for a grade span type of thing?
Well, we've, we have talked about that in the past, but I think it's such an unknown as far as what's needed on a particular day. We have a lot of our substitutes that are working every day and they're just are working, you know, in different capacities, so I don't know if, I don't think that would really solve our problem because, I don't know, what if, what if they didn't have, you know, something to do on a particular day? I mean, most likely they would, but, so I don't know, it's something that, you know, we can talk about. I know the secretaries are meeting next month and they're going to meet with Matt Fry Davis, who's in charge of our frontline substitute calling software and see if they can come up with maybe some different little methods to make it easier on both sides and-
Are there days we don't have coverage? I mean, I'm sure it happens occasionally.
There are days that there are, there are some classrooms that aren't covered and they cover it somehow within the schools, you know, but on a given day, you know, we, well, I can look at it financially, like bi-weekly, paying substitutes, I mean, we pay like $20,000 bi-weekly, that's a lot of sub days.
Wow.
So, you know, it depends on if there's administrative leave days going and like I said, we've got, if we have a lot of maternities, then we have a lot of our substitutes that are filling in every day for those particular positions, so. On this year, I mean, I know I was counting on the way in here that there's at least six that, you know, are happening, maternity leaves right now, so.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe when we get into the budget discussion next month, you know, we can look at, you know, Jen's no, or Jen's, you know, thought of-
Floating subs.
-of hiring someone permanent, I mean, I can, you can use them as an interventionist maybe on days that they're not substituting, but if we're paying $20,000 bi-weekly for subs, that, that-
Yeah. Well, and another thing, too, is I can ask Anne Marie to run some, pull some reports of showing like how many days that-
Yeah.
-how many subs that we're using, because we just started that frontline software system last year, so we're, we've been like a full year, so maybe now we could start pulling some good reports to show what we're using for subs.
Yeah, that might be helpful. Thanks. Thanks, Deb. Any other questions of Deb? No? Okay. Thank you. Okay, item 11.0, old business, Jen, do you want to walk us through goals?
I'll do my best, I apologize for not being present last meeting. So goal number one, monitor the construction project, it sounds like we're on schedule for that, I think by electing the clerk of the works and moving forward for our, opening up of the GC bid. I'm, I think we're on track for that, even if we change our move-in date, I don't think that really impacts our success in meeting goal number one, excuse me. I think that we're definitely talking about communication in every board meeting, talked about in our workshop, workshop, shop, excuse me, this evening, and making sure that we've got a well-informed board to make a well-informed public when they come and ask us the progress of our district. We had a meeting specifically about the ACES, the goal number three, and we had some more training on that. I was pleased to see that they're doing ACES presentations at the legislature right now in their HHS committees and also will be coming up in the Education Committee. I like that it's being in the forefront of people's consideration of what it takes, what impacts a child's ability to come to school and learn. And goal number four, I don't, I don't have a sense of where we are on goal number four, I'm sorry. Someone can help me out with that one?
Yeah, Bill and Alan and I talked about possibly, maybe next month, I mean, possibly having a workshop with the board and maybe inviting in, you know, high school administration and middle school administration just to kind of review Schedule B positions, what they do, you know, make sure that it's a current list so that people just have a better understanding and then it would give an opportunity for board members to ask questions, express concerns, ask what a specific position does, so we'll try to, you know, organize that in the next, you know, month or two.
Thank you. Any questions of Jen? No? Thanks, Jen. 12.0, new business, and actually, there should have been an adjustment to the agenda, I guess. You have two overnight out-of-state field trip requests and we'll take the one that's on the agenda first. 12.1 is an overnight request for more students to visit New York City for a yearbook conference. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Bill, second by Lou. Any comment, discussion? All in favor? Any oppose? No? Okay, thank you. And then we'll make this 12.1A. You should also have a request from the RCTC for a trip to Bangor for Skills USA competition and the agenda for the competitions is on the backside of the request. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alan, second by Lou. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Any oppose? Okay, thank you, both approved. 12.2, new course proposal for Morse. You have a computer science principles proposal.
So actually, you have three here tonight. You have the AP Computer Science and then at your table tonight as part of that, I think it was part of the packet with the MSBA letter.
The AP Capstone?
Yeah, the AP Capstone.
So that was paperclip to the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want to take them individually, John's here, who is going to be teaching the AP Computer Science, so you can answer any questions you might have, and then Eric's here, if you have questions about the two courses that make up the AP Capstone. So it's, you know, the board earlier tonight, everybody have that? So we talked earlier tonight about our very successful AP program and these are three new classes and the AP Capstone, you can see on Eric's notes there that at the end, it talks about a timeline at the very bottom of that one, so however you want to take them, whatever order.
All right, well, let's get the presentation on Computer Science Principles first.
No. Looking on the side, on the side. There you go. That, oh, there we go. All right, thank you. All right, so the idea behind the AP Computer Science Principles program is to offer an AP, a computer science course that would appeal to a broad range of students that we don't really address right now. In our regular science classes at Morse High School, we do a pretty good job with gender balance and socioeconomic balance and that type of thing, but not really in the existing computer science class. And this one, Computer Science Principles, was actually designed to address that particularly and it provides a broad background of computer science topics, hopefully I won't make any feedback. The big ideas are creativity, abstraction, data and information, algorithms, programming, the internet and global impact. And so the idea is that this is a computer science class that can help to prepare a student for whatever they might decide to do once they leave Morse High School, go accomplish, go to the workforce, this can provide that good background as opposed to being the really specific programming style course. I was just listening, like, one of the things that might have come up when you were discussing the per pupule expenditure, per pupule expenditure is all over, everybody uses it, but it's really not the best measure for what it costs to put a kid through school, so the federal lawsuits, or the lawsuits now in other states about school funding go to using per pupule expenditure. So this was kind of like a topic we could explore a little bit, why is it not that good? Specifically, the reason is that it's more like standby, it doesn't cost much to add a kid until you have to add a teacher to cover that kid and then it, of course, and then it spikes up. So those kind of issues of what might seem to be a simple thing initially, turns out maybe not to be that simple and could be interesting to a kid. So for me, I really like this course a lot, it costs us nothing, the materials are free. There is a summer training of $500, but that's still in my budget, so hopefully, you know, I might be able to cover it. There is a possibility of a grant to cover that, so I would know within a couple weeks. And so this is like a general AP that most kids could take, it's not, like AP chemistry is like really at a certain level and it's a small population, this is a much broader population that it would address.
Okay, thanks. Any questions, John?
Yeah, is this, does this curriculum include some of the backgrounds, the movement of the Girls Can Code back-
Yes, yes. So there, code.org is one of the organizations that's involved with this and additionally, Amazon has come up with banking it through a different way, but yeah, so really addressing gender equity and underserved populations.
And so just content-wise, it sounds like from what I'm reading in here, this can help some kids understand, for kids who, obviously they've all grown up with the internet, but understanding what some of these, like how algorithms work or what the, like everything you're hearing, you know, the things that are going on with Facebook, the things you're in the news now, I mean, this helps them become more literate about understanding these issues, correct?
Absolutely. It also gives them some tools, I mean, I work with kids in my chemistry class using spreadsheets to do calculations that normally would have been done by hand in the old days, but just seeing kids now that you would think might know how to do this, to take a formula within a spreadsheet and then copy it down, so the formula replicates with adjustments for rows and columns, they're pretty much like, "Oh." So, yeah, absolutely, that, looking at the internet, security, safety issues, the implications of who has your data and what might they do with it? If you, you know, if you get your DNA tested, it ends up in some database- If you, you know, if you get your DNA tested, it ends up in some database someplace. And so what are the implications there?
Jen?
Does this fall into our STEM programming then? Is this part of STEM?
I guess STEM, it would be part of STEM in a, in a broad sense, but this, I don't know if you're speaking about STEM or STEAM, or STEAM Academy, which is kind of part one and the same, but it's not part of the STEAM Academy, although it could be one of those options that they take that builds towards their STEAM endorsement, but but wouldn't specifically be for those STEAM.
Because isn't there a room for electives within that STEAM?
Yeah, I mean, it's really-
So I mean, they could, so it could fall as an, as a-
But it would be, that would be a narrower-
Yeah, it's largely based, I mean, the STEAM Academy is based off of many options and this would be one of those options. So it would be opening up another door for an option in, in computer science, so.
Great.
Thanks, John. If you, what's the pleasure of the board? You want to act on this and then we'll-
Yeah, I'll motion to approve.
We got a motion by Lou to approve, second by Jen. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thanks. So then we have a second, and a third, and a third proposal on one sheet for the AP Capstone. Eric.
Sorry, this didn't make it into the board packet earlier. This was a proposal that I've, I brought forward to the department heads two months ago and we batted around, came, needed to look at a little bit more data and we brought it back in February and I've decided to move forward on it. And essentially it's adding a, what's called AP Capstone option to Morse High School. AP Capstone is relatively new offering in, that the college board has been doing. There's, there's a handful of schools in Maine that, that have taken, taken the, this road. And I think it'd be great for Morse. One, in that we've had some pretty significant success in APs, not just with a certain population of, of students, but from a wide range of, of students. And that's why we were designated as the, on the AP honor roll this year was because of bringing many scores up across different types of students. And so essentially to become a, what the AP Capstone consists of, once I have approval, I'll apply to the college board to make Morse a AP Capstone school. And we need to add two courses to our course book. AP Seminar and AP Research. AP Seminar is usually the class that students would take first and then followed by AP Research. You could kind of think of it as a junior, senior option, but however, AP Seminar could be done as a sophomore year, which would be really, it'd be nice to add in another option for, for sophomores. And they're thematic, much more thematic. And research is a little bit more self-explanatory. It's, it's a significant endeavor into research of their choosing. Whereas Seminar is, is a step before that and there's some major themes that students delve into with their teacher. I've had one, one teacher, Brian Stanton, do a site visit in Massachusetts on a, on a AP Capstone school and looked at some, looked at it overall and what it did for the school and also some concerns that I had about access and about pushing resources towards a certain group of students. And one, some positive things came out of that. One was that there were, some students take AP Seminar as their only AP class that they took at school. There's very few prerequisites. And in getting into it a little bit deeper, it looks like although a student, this would be very beneficial for a student who takes four AP classes, gets a three or higher on those four classes, subject-based classes, and then did the same on AP Seminar and AP Research, that would be, the student would get a college board AP Capstone endorsed diploma, which is a significant thing. If they only chose to take AP Seminar, only chose to take AP Research or didn't have those qualifications of those four other subject-based, they would still receive designation as an AP Seminar or an AP Research. So it is, at first blush, it does look like we're, we're throwing resources at a certain group of kids, but I don't think that's the case, particularly with AP Seminar. I think that we can, or I know that we can, we can teach these two classes with our current teachers that we have at Morse right now. So this would not involve any change in staffing. It would just be a reallocation of the way we're using the staffing. And I put the timeline down at the bottom. This is something, it's not a guarantee, we do need to apply, but as I said, we've had some success, so I, I think this is a good direction to go.
Thanks, Eric. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
So, two question. One is, so with that, with the seminar, would there be a set of, like the contents already there? The teacher comes up with the topics, these are the topics we're going to delve into. Is it a semester long or is it?
These are both year-long classes.
Both year-long classes, okay.
And most likely the way we, it would be a standalone class, the way we, we teach it now. Some schools are attaching this to something like AP Literature, for instance, and, and having sort of a double block thing. I think with our schedule, it would, it would behoove us to make it a standalone class for students who choose to take this and not attach to another, another class just for access issues. The, yeah, the, the teacher would set the major themes. On the site visit that Mr. Stanton went on, I remember the theme, what, some of the themes were, humor, for instance, was one of the, the themes. There was a specific strand of literature that was another theme. So they're kind of wide, wide range.
So, so does it, does it change year to year? Or do you establish something and then if it's like, if it's humor or something like that, is it every year that's given? And then, so I mean, obviously it's going to be more on the literature end of, of things, I guess, or theater? I don't know. I'm just trying, is it, is it cross-disciplinary or can it?
It, it can be cross-disciplinary. So for instance, I mean, Mr. Stan's an English teacher. We could have a history or a science teacher teaching this. Now, as far as the leeway of how much leeway they have from year to year on the themes, I'm not sure the answer to that, if that's set, if those themes are run through every year the same or if it's a teacher decision and then the exam that they take at the end of the year is more based on the skills that they pick up, that would be-
Because is the curriculum coming from, you know, recreating it or is it coming from, that we meet certain requirements or is it coming from somewhere else?
The structure of the curriculum comes from the college board, similar to, to-
Right, to establish the AP.
Yeah, but then what's done in the class is a teacher, teacher decision, so.
What's, unduplicated count? How many kids participate in AP classes at Morse?
I'd be clutching at straws if I told, gave, came up with a number right now. It's, yeah, I, I could get back to you on that. As far as the total number, I, I don't think I'd do it justice to come up with it right now. But I certainly can come up with that. We, in looking at this, we, we looked back at the past, I think, five or six years and looked at how many students would access this to look at whether this was beneficial and brought what we thought it would. And, and we thought that there would be a high enough access of, of students. The colleges right now are, I've been told, that are looking at this on this similar level as a, as an IB, an International Baccalaureate Diploma. So where we were close enough, striking distance, as far as our students and their scores, and we could bring those kids out, it would really be beneficial for those kids to, to have a shot at an AP Capstone.
I'm just curious, because you, you raised the, the potential criticism that we're throwing resources at a, at a fixed bucket of, of kids.
Right.
And, and I'm just curious what, what size that, that group is.
Oh.
Our data maven has the number.
Yeah, so. So total 2018, it does appear to be growing. 2018, we had 104 total students involved in AP. So that was, however, they took 164 exams, so a large number are taking more than one exam.
So 104 is an unduplicated, 104 indiv-
Individual students.
Individual students, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's not. And so you're saying that if you had, so this particular one with the seminar, depending on what the topic ended up being, it, it certainly could be more open to a larger group of students?
Yeah, and I'd like to, John touched on this a little bit. I mean, although AP is sort of an, an upper-level curriculum and they're, and they're really shooting to get college credit while still in high school, the fact of the matter is that not, there's still a vast difference between an introductory AP Computer Science, AP Human Geography, AP even Environmental Science versus AP Chemistry, AP Calculus. You're still, just as in college, those are different courses for us in college, right?
Right.
They're different courses, AP courses. And Seminar would be more aligned with that AP Computer Science where it's accessible and, and hopefully that 104 would be, this would increase those total numbers.
Right. Well, but it's, but the advantage is this, these classes are structured more like a college course would be structured.
Correct, yeah.
So it gives them that experience.
Yeah.
So and, and the more kids can get that kind of experience, the better.
Yeah, and the AP Research is, is a bit more significant. They don't take an exam like they do in most AP classes. It is all along the way and then there's a final sort of a defense.
Right.
More of a, really more of a grad school model.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's always, always a balancing act. You need to know how many students we're serving, but at the same time, we're competing against other private schools, public schools, and we've got to make sure that we have both ends, all ends of the spectrum. And this, at a very minimal cost, will allow us to offer something that will allow our high achievers and motivated students to really excel. And I think we're going to see, similar to my experience in my past district where we had IB Theory of Knowledge class, which was, we got the right teacher, it attracted students, and it was asking questions, deep questions, higher level thinking of why, of why are, you know, about a certain topic. And so we had students that, that was their first IB class.
And they wanted more.
Yeah, and it excited them, and this, like AP Research. And they have a student that has a real passion for something, that may be the only class they take, but it helps prepare them for college, so.
Yeah, that's great.
And it wouldn't be the only AP that we now offer that is often, or not often, but many students access it as their only AP and then do well on the exam, you know, which is a, it's just like those SAT, those students who, we have everybody take the SATs and then some students really do well on them and it's, it's kind of a realization of their own skills. And some of these classes, and I hope Seminar will be one of those, that it would be that realization of, of their potential.
How do you, how do you schedule this, I mean, for the kid? I, I guess my, what I'm trying to get at is, is are there limiting factors that would, would suggest that some kids are going to be able to access this program and others not, just from a scheduling perspective?
There always are, especially with a singleton, as we call them, which this would be. We'd only offer it once. And so we've, this, you know, it's like a enormous Sudoku puzzle when we do this, this scheduling. And we need to, you know, we, we couldn't put this opposite, another one-off that might be the same group of students, you know, a band, for instance, only meets certain times. So whenever we add singletons, we make the puzzle more complicated and, and we will be.
Okay.
So how would it qualify, if, if they're different topics, how does that qualify? I'm just curious, when someone's doing their schedule, is that an elective? Or does it, depending on what the topic is, will it fall into a science or a history or an English elective, or do we not know that yet?
We haven't quite gone down that road yet. But it's a question that I've batted around a bit. And it could, you know, it, it, there's a lot of options. It could be that it's the, what the theme brings it to. It also could be, you know, some schools are looking at what the, what the student needs, you know, what they're choosing here and choosing not to in other areas. I haven't figured out what we will do.
But there will be something classified at some point, once that's-
Yeah, and, and it could be an elective credit. Yeah.
Great.
So I'm, I'm just going to ask either of our student reps if you want to comment on this. I mean, we're adding, adding a course. I don't know if either of you do AP courses now, but what, what do you?
I'm currently in two, actually the two he mentioned, right up at first, AP Human Geo and APEPS. And I think adding these two would be really cool because I think a lot of students, when you offer them a research topic that they get to choose, that it's not like, hey, here's your assignment, give me 10 pages on it. I think when they get to pick and choose what they really want to focus on, especially in this sense where preparing them for college, I think it's going to help them to really dig in and actually be interested in it rather than just trying to get those things down. And I, so I think that, that it would be really cool. Of course, I'm not going to be able to use it, but I think it will be a good opportunity for them to just, like, almost have that opportunity to just, like, see that it's not always just, this is your assignment and you have to complete it, that you can actually, like, be engaged and want to do school, because that's how it's going to be in college, so, yeah.
I'm also in, or I'm actually in Sid's AP Environmental Science class and I'm taking AP US History right now. And I feel that adding one or both of the exams, AP Seminar and AP Research, would be, I just feel like an important opportunity, especially for young, or I guess underclassmen, so really sophomores, just to have more of an AP experience. Because I know for me, or my class, I believe, only AP World and AP Music Theory were the two APs that were offered, or at least kind of made sense to take as a sophomore and would have really been beneficial, or at least like would have enabled the student to thrive in that environment. And I feel like, kind of as Sid said, like this would be a very important, like, not only introduction to an AP class, but it might cater to a larger basis of students as it's essentially saying like, this is an AP class, but you can kind of adjust it to what your specific desires or wants or needs are. And I feel like that would really attract a large group of students.
Thank you, thanks. Cindy, you can always, you can always stay an extra year if you want. Yep, John.
I've been here a long time and I've seen the student population change and really grow to the students we have now that really seem to have a drive for public service that wasn't there 30 years ago. And I see these two courses as really able to address that. So even if the kid wasn't, or I'm not going to do AP, they still have that kind of drive to, to do good, do-gooder type thing. And I think that these, these are classes going to provide them some tools or motivation to pursue that. So I think it's important for them.
Okay, thanks, thanks. So I, I need a motion. This would, this would be on-
For both of them?
For both, the AP Seminar and AP Research. It's listed, the AP Seminar is slated beginning 2019, the AP-
Research begins 2020.
Research 2020, so.
So I would move that we accept both the Seminar and Research with the timeline that Mr. Barney has given us.
So we have a motion by Lou, second by Megan. Any discussion, any further discussion? If not, no? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thanks. Eric, when do we, when would you, when you apply, when do you usually hear? Do you know what they're, I mean, you said you send it in March. Do you usually hear by...
It says two-week response.
Oh, two weeks, is that right?
Yeah, they tell me a two-week turnaround, so we'll find out.
We'll find out if it's accurate.
Maybe, maybe when we get into the budget discussions in March, it might be nice to have a summary of what our AP courses are, what the enrollments are, and what classes, what year they're open to, you know, which, which courses are open to seniors, sophomores, juniors.
I can do that.
Yep. Okay, thank you. 12.3, we have two new policies. These are not action items, but we'll take a minute to look at them and raise any questions. So 12.2, 12.3A, Extracurricular Activity Participation Regulation, JJIAB.
Other members of the policy committee will chime in as well. But the major changes, on page one, that, everything about the academic piece, that was done prior to, and so we've been, we've been doing that. The real changes on this policy start on page two, under F, when it comes to the drug and alcohol use by students. And page three is the real meat, page three and four. And we just, we looked at our policy and felt like, after we did some research with other districts, we were much more punitive...
Yeah, that's what you said.
...than other districts when it came to first offense, second offense, third offense. So we really stepped back, took a look at it. Eric and Nate had conversations with the staff. We still want to hold students accountable, but we also want to make sure that they don't feel defeated if they've made a mistake or two, and that they're banned and can never play, you know, again. And so you can see how the first and second offense and third offense, what they are now, and also some expectations for receiving some assistance before they return to play. So this has been run by coaches and by the staff at Morse, so it's a first reading.
Okay, any, any other comments? I have a couple. I still find it a little bit confusing. There are still a couple of references in here to rehearsals and performances. I mean, this is, the policy is intended to cover not only sports, but other extracurricular...
Yeah, we, we made a little adjustment to that, and this was from faculty feedback mostly, was, we, we used to have it just applied to MPA-sanctioned events, and we added a couple of things in, in there, which were other, which was the fall play and Mohiba. Faculty felt as though it was a significant amount of time and effort that kids were giving, and that this same standard should apply for those. We debated around clubs, but just the tracking of kids and their association with clubs was too burdensome to, to do. So the rest of these all have rosters that are ahead of time published, or, you know, cast and crew or whatnot, so it was, it was easier for us to, it was more manageable, really.
Yeah, it's just that some of the, I just find it awkward that some of the references are more appropriate, whether they're sports. You use, you use this activity participation in sports as really the basis, and yet, and yet you're talking about participation in plays, I guess, and, and other, banned, I presume, and other things, so.
Well, it wouldn't be, it would be plays, it always applied to the one-act play, because that was MPA-sanctioned. Now we just extended it to the other, the other two play, significant plays that we put on. And the references, most of it is, well, if we, if a student is, violates the policy, they can't compete in a game. And so the equivalent of a game would be the play, right? But most of, if you're involved in theater, most of your effort goes into the rehearsal, and then you have the play one weekend. So it's, it's kind of a square peg, round hole issue, but that's why they're a little bit different.
Okay, well, I think I raised it before, and I'm not carrying the field here. The other comment I have is on K, which is Parent-Coach Communication. I mean, to me, it just seems, this is a policy that largely affects students and how they are affected by certain, in terms of their participation in certain activities. And yet, we have this, this Section K, which, which really, to me, it doesn't belong here. It's not that there's anything in the, the Section K that, that's inappropriate. It's just, I don't, I don't know why it's here, you know? I mean, this relates to a parent, to some guidance that's sent out to parents on, on how to address their, their child's sports coach, an athletic activity. There are no penalties to the kid, I mean, if the parent violates these, these guidelines, I presume there's no penalty to the student in terms of, in terms of restricting their participation if their father or mother decides to yell from the sideline and bully the coach. I'm sure these are communicated to the parents. I mean, I, I'm saying I'm sure, maybe they aren't, I don't know. But what, what's the purpose of putting it here? Why shouldn't this be, you know, again, in some sort of a guideline that the Athletic Department issues to parents of children participating in sports?
Well, the, what comes out of this policy is a, is a contract that's, the student and the parent signs, and it's, it's kind of an initial agreement, I guess. And so that's why that Parent-Coach Communication was, was in there. It's not a change. I guess the, I wasn't there on the, this is a part of the existing policy, so I wasn't there on the...
Yeah, it comes, this is coming from the Maine Principals Association, because they want this all-encompassing. You know, it is, I mean, Nate takes pieces of this, and that's what he goes over with Parent Nights, and that's what he puts into a different type of brochure. But I also think it, you know, I'm sure the reason it's in there, it adds to, you know, a little bit of reinforcement for Nate and our coaches to say, this is what, you know, this is what's appropriate, this is, this is what isn't. I mean, I think we could say that about a lot of our policies, that sometimes we have in either, you know, sometimes too much, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, think about it. The header for this regulation is that the following rules shall govern student participation in extracurricular activities. And this section really doesn't have anything to do with student participation, unless, unless we penalize the student for the parent's behavior. Like I say, there's nothing, I don't disagree with anything substantive about, about how you define appropriate communication or what's not appropriate. I just don't know why it's, why it's in this regulation that deals with student participation, but...
Steve, would you see any place for that paragraph somewhere in reference to A, the parental consent form? I mean, in terms of, you know, parental consent form is required, you know, and then we talk about the parental communication piece. I'm just off the top of my head.
Well, maybe that's, maybe that's the way to get it in there. If the form, and Eric, you alluded to that, I mean, the parent is required to sign a contract.
Yeah, it's all-encompassing.
An all-encompassing contract for the student?
Yeah, and I, I don't have the contract in front of me, but to see, to see whether that is in that same contract, you know, I, I'm sure that...
If you could check, if you could check.
I, I can, I'm sure that Nate Reese has that.
That is a way to bring it in. If the form, if the form addresses this, then maybe there's a reason that appropriately fits you.
Correct, yeah.
From, you know, helping in various situations, that the language under K, I specifically have used with our lawyers within the past year, and it would not have been good if it was not there in a policy. It was, if what you're suggesting is to remove it and just put it in something else, I would feel uncomfortable with that. Because if someone didn't sign it, for whatever reason, it wouldn't apply. Versus this applies to anyone involved in any activity.
Well, maybe the way to fix it is what Jen suggests, is that you have a reference in A that when it talks about the form, that the form includes this section on parent behavior.
Sure, I would just want, maybe Patrick or I to talk to our lawyer about what the best...
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
You know, because I know I specifically have used that recently.
Okay, so we've got 12.3B, Policy JC, Transgender and Gender Expansive Student Guidelines. And this looks like it does come directly from a lawyer's office, so, no?
No, actually, I mean, that's, you know, that's where we start, but I think I sent you guys some additional backup. We did have Gia Drew from Maine Equality join us on a, you know, on a voice call, and we had a parent representative come in, and we had two students join us. And so there was a lot of back and forth. This took probably two or three different meetings. We're not done with it yet. I think we felt like it was okay to bring it to you for a first reading. You know, there's some terminology in there that you might have questions about, that's new to you. But I do need to get this out to middle school, well, all of our administrators, because we did remove some guidelines, and we may want to keep those in there, just about processes that we use for identification. So, but, we thought it was in good enough form to bring to you for a first reading tonight.
No, it looked really comprehensive.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, Steve, to you, Patrick. This is a very sensitive area, and one that's relatively new to all of us. Are we going to have legal counsel review this for us in terms of any legal issues that may be involved?
Yeah, I mean, we have guidelines from them that we've had for a couple of years now, and that would still be part of this as well, but yeah, we will. And we've had our safe club at the high school, so it's been nice. I mean, we've had, it's been more time than we spent probably on any other policy, but we've had student input, which is nice, and we've had faculty input and parent input. So we'll keep working on it, but wanted for you to see it tonight.
Right, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll act on those at our next, at our next meeting. 13.0, this is our second public comment period. Does anyone, on this opportunity to raise any issues that you'd like to talk about? Anyone? No? Okay, thank you. 14.0, next meeting dates and locations. So we have our next regular meeting scheduled for Monday, March 25th, here at the middle school at 6 o'clock. And I do just want to remind folks under upcoming events that, I guess it's next Monday, March 4th, we will be meeting in the, at the central office, and start going through the budget in detail with the principals and department heads. Again, I encourage, although it says Finance Committee, I encourage any board member who's, who's available to make an effort to try to get there. It's very informative, I realize some of you have work schedules to deal with, but the offer is out there. Even if you can participate in part of a discussion, it would be great. And the second session for that budget, those budget presentations would be the following Monday, on March 11th. So anyone who can come, please be there. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure, second.
Motion by Bill, second by Lou, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, thanks.
Thanks, Steve.